Public participation is required by law or allowed by the board chair. And with that, I call to order the November nineteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Board of Regional Commissioners. And please join us for a pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And could we have a moment of silence to reflect on the bravery and sacrifices of all those who put their lives on the line in service to our country? Protecting our freedom, our safety, and our democracy. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of minutes.
Chair, I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty five.
I will second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And now onto general business, we're going to hear about the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Update. And with us is Michael McGuire, Cooperative Extension Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Mike McGuire, Director, Cooperative Extension.
Well, it's nice that you're coming here with happiness.
Yes.
I know.
I know, as you were saying, there's no matter.
Years of hard work, right?
No, this really has been pursued for a long time.
So this has been something that has been a commissioner's initiative for a long time. I know. We've discussed this many times between all of us. I know Commissioner, Chair Lyons, you and I were in Truro in August discussing this. Commissioner Forrest, we've discussed this many times, and Commissioner Bergstrom, we have as well. So in between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve, the county had undertaken the first of its kind regional wildfire plan. Actually, it's the first in the country. We did a great job with that plan, implemented many of the recommendations in it. But over the past thirteen, fourteen years or so, we've seen a significant change in our forestry demographics, the maintenance of those open spaces, and the ability to use AI to look at maps and do modeling and predictions. And we've also seen many, many wildfires across the country impact communities significantly. And I think we're all very concerned about what might or could happen here on the Cape. Over the past five years, I've submitted several wildfire planning grants to update the existing plan. We have not been successful up until this past round. So USDA wildfire program that we just received a hundred and thirty nine thousand, five hundred dollar grant from. There is a fifteen thousand dollar match from the county that I had placed in my budget and you and the Assembly had approved for this year. Anticipating the award of this grant is going to go to match it as well as forty five thousand dollars from Mass DCR. So in total, it's about a hundred ninety nine thousand, five hundred dollars that are now going to be available for us to hire contractors to run the next two point oh version of the regional wildfire planning grant or plans for all fifteen towns on Cape Cod. Those, all those plans have to be vetted individually in each town. We're going to have hearings in each town. We'll make sure that fire chiefs, conservation agents, all those professionals are consulted. We have public hearings so that the public can come in. We're going to have state and federal officials attending these meetings as well. And with the idea of each individual town adopting a plan that works for their town that is just like we do with with groundwater, wildfire isn't going to respect boundaries either. So we're going to have a comprehensive plan that incorporates abutting communities to make sure that all of the wildfire plans are cohesive. And what that allows us to do, once this plan is complete, is compete for federal and state funding for implementation. It's very hard for us to do the implementation when we don't have an up to date plan. So obviously, plan first, get the highest priorities identified. Then each individual town can make decisions about how they want to allocate funds. And then the county will also be pursuing that on behalf of the towns to get implementation funding in once we have this accomplished. I did ask Chief LeBlanc from Harwich to be on the call. Not sure if he's made the call yet. And Josh from DCR, and neither one of them may, I know they're both very, very engaged. You know, we had some really rough things happen yesterday, too, so with that church collapse. And I know most of the fire departments were involved with dealing with that, so they may not be available on this call right now. But we do, I do want to let you know that the Cape and Islands Fire Chief Association was one of the largest proponents of this. They're all aware, all the chiefs are aware, they're on board. They're going to be major players in this. So Chief LeBlanc in Harwich is the, is the Vice Chair, and J.J. Burke in Sandwich is the Chair. And they're both very, very supportive of this. And we've also worked with the National Seashore, our park partners. Oh, there's, there's the chief now. The seashore is, yeah. So we can welcome the chief to the conversation.
Good morning, Chief LeBlanc. I think it's, what does he have to do, unmute? Does he see that we're recognizing him? Okay, he does.
Looks like he might be able to, hi, chief.
Muted again.
Muted again.
You would think, is that working?
Yes, yes.
You would think by now, my computer restarted this morning and everything's broken, so. Sorry, sorry for being late. Like I said, a little bit of a conflict, but I'm happy to be here and, and you know, throw the Chiefs Association's support behind us. It's a project that's long overdue and a lot of groundwork went into getting it to this point, so.
Chief, I, I know every town has, you know, joint jurisdiction, you know, in Harwich and Brewster, we've got the Punkhorn, you know, we've got other spaces that are shared. And I was just telling the commissioners about, you know, when you're dealing with wildfire, it's much like groundwater. So we have shared resources and with the mutual aid that you have, you know, I was wondering if you wouldn't mind talking about the coordination you have between the different towns and how you'd approach a wildfire.
Sure, so, you know, Barnstable County is unique, as we're all aware, because all our mutual aid, all our resources can really only come from one direction. So, you know, we're, we're limited in what we can pull from the lower Cape up, but we have a really robust mutual aid system. We all work very well together. Lot of combined resources, a lot of combined training. And then folded into that is Department of Conservation and Recreation for wildfires, huge resource, who's also well integrated into our system. And then statewide, we have Forestry Task Force, part of the statewide mobility system that can bring resources onto the Cape like we did last year for the big wildfires at Joint Base. So there's already a really good system in place and, and a lot of planning, but it's, it's a plan that is outdated. Obviously, needed to be dusted off and looked at and, and see what other things we can bring to bear, what other areas that we need to focus on to make sure that we're as prepared as we can be with all of our partners for this event or for an event like this.
Now, this is excellent news, and I do understand the role DCR because, mainly because of that talk that we went to in Truro. So, you know, on the outer Cape, they're all, people get very concerned because of the amount of forest there. And it's sort of in its natural state at all times, which means, you know, when trees fall over, they fall over and just decay. So I do think, you know, that was a very educational thing for me, but I'm very happy that this is here. And I'm very happy to have the support and involvement of the Chief Association. And does anyone have any questions for the chief or for Michael?
No, I, if it's okay, I can, I just want to thank, thank David for joining us and for the support of the fire chiefs. This has been a very high priority for us, and we're not looking for just an updated plan, but we're anxious to play an active role in implementing the plan, helping with ongoing training, any additional equipment. We know that DCR is a great partner, but we also know that at Joint Base Cape Cod, they have resources there, and they can be another important partner. We've been getting briefings on the work that they're doing out there, the capabilities that they have. And I think together with the county's involvement, the involvement of the chiefs and these other partners, I think we can put together not just a strong plan, but the capability to respond to almost any situation that might emerge. I like the idea in the planning process of identifying ways in which we can help through our fire departments, assist homeowners in doing things individually to reduce risk. There are things that they can do, and in some communities, that work is going on where that kind of education is being provided through the fire departments. And I think that's terrific, but there are other towns that probably could use, you know, some help in terms of developing that kind of capability. So I think there's a lot of good stuff that'll come out of this, and I, once again, want to congratulate Mark, Mike McGuire, for being just so persistent on this and keep, and just being relentless in pursuing funding to get this off the ground. So, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I don't want to jump ahead because I know you'll probably be looking at these things, you and the chiefs, but I, I assume that you're going to identify the areas of greatest risk here on the Cape. In other words, are we talking about heavily treated areas like the Punkhorn? Are we talking about grassland scrub areas like the National Seashore, you know, and there's any historical record where, you know, wildfires have come up? But I mean, like, like Mark and Jill, I applaud this effort, you know, in looking into this because, you know, if an incident does occur, you have to know exactly how to respond, you know. If it's a grassland fire, do we limit it? Do we try to put it out? Do we just protect, do we protect, you know, physical assets like houses? Or do we, you know, so, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot into it, and I appreciate that the efforts of you and the chiefs in looking into it and making those decisions. So hopefully, it won't happen, but if it happens, then we got to be ready.
Well, you know, already with drought and that sort of thing, we've already had some brush fires that people really don't even are aware of because they are taken care of so swiftly and with collaboration. So, and I know that from the outer Cape, I, I'm one of those fearful people that are always looking at my woods. And I also know that there is that ability, and hopefully, it will be enhanced, of being able to go to someone's home and saying, you know, you have too many trees or they're too close, and kind of give advice on what, how they could protect themselves best they can. I know that you have a busy day ahead of you, chief, and I know that you've had a busy day yesterday. So I don't want to take too much of your time, but we really do appreciate your help on this effort and your further collaboration and input in that of your association.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, and, you know, Chief Burke wasn't able to be here today, asked me to sit in and, you know, just, I will, we want to express our appreciation to everybody involved for, for getting the, you know, getting this moved forward. I think one of the, the big things that, yeah, I've seen in my lifetime, in my career in the fire department on the Cape, is our resources have changed as fire departments. We've gone away from, you know, Harwich started out as a forest fire department, and, and it wasn't until nineteen twenty nine that we officially became a fire department. And when you go back through our annual reports, we had, we had trailer pumps and hose packs, and we were putting out fires that were set by the trains. And everybody had brush breakers and, you know, the, the great fire in fifty five in Plymouth where, you know, Barnstable County went to Plymouth. Now, there's very few breakers left on the Cape. There's very few tankers left on the Cape. Our resources have changed because our environment's changed. We have a lot more houses.
Exactly.
But last year showed with the drought last year and what happened off Cape, you know, that that urban interface, that area where residential houses and, and commercial buildings abut wooded areas really needs to be defended and protected along with, you know, having a capability to put the fires out. So, you know, the environment's changed, our capabilities have changed, and it's really time that we put a fresh set of eyes on it and came up with a plan that, that's going to work with what we have in, you know, in our current environment with an eye toward the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you, chief.
Well, we all look forward to working with you, and we thank you again for your, for all your efforts and for everything you do every day, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And thanks, chief. I'll let you go. You know, just to hit on a couple of things, too, that were mentioned. The AmeriCorps program does play a critical role in implement aid, implementing this, and we've had a fire corps in the past with AmeriCorps. And through DCR, we have had AmeriCorps members that have studied and recorded all of the wildfires that have happened in, in many of the towns on the Cape. We have reports on that. The, the ability to take that and then use that to project in the future, it can't be understated. We're going to continue to utilize AmeriCorps members in that capacity as well as doing the implementation work. Once it, once we get these plans in place, they're very good at reducing or creating fire breaks, reducing the amount of fuel that's on the ground, you know, and provide critical labor to assist the towns that are in need. So it's going to be another large component. And Commissioner Forrest, thank you so much for bringing up the military base as well. The Joint Base Cape Cod has some great resources. They were a partner on this proposal as well as the seashore. So, you know, any, anyone that's a player in this region has been involved with the proposal. And you'll hear a lot more from me once we have this plan in place, and we will be actively seeking additional resources to get to the towns, whether that's equipment, person power, you know, any of the, any of the things that we have here at the county that we can lend to them.
Well, we're here to offer our support and help any way we can, and we look forward to working on this. And I think a lot of people will be relieved to hear that it's been awarded, and we're going forward.
Thank you so much. And then if I, I, I might ask, I don't know if I, if I, this is allowed, or if you would like me to wait, but.
You hear the buzzer.
I might have to go. So I, we did, we did just receive word that we received another grant. Typically, that announcement would come at the end in staff announcements. But I would, if it's okay to talk about it now and go out of order, as a hot off the presses, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection just awarded our, our department Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. It's a ninety thousand dollar grant. It's the largest amount awarded in the applicant pool, and this is for food rescue. So the concept of food rescue, you know, we, we talked a little bit last week, and we've talked recently about challenges with delivering food to people in need in this community. We do have a food access coordinator that's been working on that system. So food rescue, the concept of it is, we know that there's food in wholesale distributors. We know there's food at restaurants and in grocery stores that's nearing the end of its life. And so from Mass DEP's perspective, they don't want to see that food in the trash.
Right.
From our perspective, from a food access perspective, that food is very valuable, but it has a very short window of life, and not all of it is created equal. So there's many different food rescue programs. This grant is going to take what we have now and bring it to a whole new level. So there's three components of the grant. We're going to have a regional food recovery portal. So it'll be an online portal that'll be, you know, only limited to the participants, whether they're, you know, a distributor that wants to give us food or one of the food pantries that wants to receive it and deliver it to the community. That's going to be an online resource that's funding through this grant. We, we're going to have a coordinated food rescue operations led by the Cape Cod Council of Churches. We're going to hire a food rescue program manager to help implement that, and we're going to have outreach and training for business and volunteers to just discuss the concept of the program and how it would work. So this, this ninety thousand dollar grant, from Mass DEP's perspective, is going to keep a lot of the, almost twenty percent of what's in our trash is food, honestly. Like, it's a, unfortunately, it's the, the reality of the world we live in, and a lot of that can be diverted. They're going to be happy about that side of it, and we're going to also benefit greatly from having this food go to people in, in need and get it to them quickly through a coordinated system, so.
That's excellent. That really is great. I was cleaning out my pantry the other day, and I'm, you know, you have these things that are just near their expiration date. You can't bring them to a food pantry because they are near that, that expiration date, and.
And imagine.
Use it quick or.
Right. Imagine if you're a grocery store or restaurant, you know, and you have this massive quantity, and, and they all have distribution systems to try to assist with that, but they're not as efficient as they could be, and we know that we can really move the bar with this. So those are, so you heard about the wildfire, you heard about this one. So those are the two bits of good news for today.
A lot of, a lot of good grant writing there, Mark, I mean, Michael, and thank you for all of that effort. We're very happy, yes.
You know, talking, Jill talks about cleaning out her pantry, and so often, I'll go in every once in a while, I say, well, I better look at this cabinet. And they look, and you find something that's expired or close to expired, you know. And the question is, why didn't I make that decision two weeks ago? If I said, hey, I've got this here, I'm not, probably not going to use it, you know.
Right.
Sit there until it expires. Maybe we can get it out to someone who can't use it. So that's, I know, I know that doesn't amount to much compared to restaurants and food stuff, but eventually.
It, it does, though. I mean, that's our community, in the end, what we saw with SNAP and the federal shortfall is that if we want to have a resilient community, a community that, that can handle these things, we, we can't rely on the federal government. We, we have to be able, and, and thank goodness, we had so many people step up during that shortfall. You know, we saw a lot of people in need get served locally. But, you know, the Greater Boston Food Bank delivers, delivers five point one million pounds of food to Cape Cod pantries every year. It's a lot of food, and that's, that's one outside resource coming in, so.
You know, and we're, I just want to say, we're disposable. We, we don't think anything about this, you know, well, I got that on sale, now I can just throw it away. And we have to change that thinking as well. I'm sorry, Mike.
See, I'm glad you brought up food insecurity because it, you know, and congratulations in terms of this funding. But, you know, I appreciate the fact that while the news has been breaking, you know, regarding SNAP funding and the federal government basically dropping the ball and providing food to people, which is, is just unconscionable, what's been going on. I've been impressed with the extent to which Cooperative Extension has been incredibly visible and out there in the press and in the media as a resource for people that need to, some guidance and help in terms of where to go. And I think that's, you know, we have so many organizations on the Cape, yes, that's my sign that one has.
Yes.
But we have so many organizations here on the Cape that are stepping in to help out, that sometimes you just don't know where to go. And the Cooperative Extension, to be so visible, so engaged in this, I think, is, is, has been terrific, so just kudos to you folks. I'm curious if at some point we need to revisit this topic, if we've learned from this crisis, if there are things that we need to be doing so that the next time, hopefully, that there isn't a next time, but if indeed there is, we're prepared, you know.
I would be, I think, once budget season's over, we should have Andrea from my office, the Food Access Coordinator, come in and do an update for you. Because there's always a crisis. There's always a crisis with food. It's how we respond to it. And the, the concept of having a food access coordinator, we don't, and I try not to toot our own horn, because there's hundreds of, of groups working on this in the community. It's not just us, but the, the problem has always been trying to sink all of the efforts and find efficiencies. And when you're a little food pantry, you know, you're open two days a week, and you have a couple volunteers, you don't have the time to look at the big picture. And that's what we've been trying to do.
Yeah.
One last thing, while you're here. Before you came in, there was a brief discussion with staff regarding the challenges that farmers are facing.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think this is probably another topic that we may want to spend some time focusing in on, particularly since you're, you play a role in interacting with a lot of the farmers, a lot of the people that are producing food. I was explaining that, you know, in Yarmouth, we had a town meeting on Monday, and we took some steps to ease, to make it easier for lobstermen to, to sell live lobsters in the town of Yarmouth. It generated some very interesting, interesting discussion. But I, I think we need to pay closer attention to the needs of our fishermen and our farmers because they don't necessarily have the resources to comply, comply, or follow the more conventional forms of compliance and management. There's nothing wrong with a lobsterman selling live lobsters from their home, and clearly, they've been doing it for years. But sometimes there are bylaws and there are regulations that are, do it just from the sake of a, of a land use. So the thing that I'm hearing from the fishing community particularly is that there are communities that are less and less fisherman friendly. And I'm also concerned that we have the same issues with folks in farming.
Yeah.
And, and so I think we just need to have our ears close to the ground on some of the challenges that farmers, fishermen are having because they're our food producers, right?
They are.
I mean, so on the one hand, we want to make food available to people, but on the other hand, we, I think we just need to be extra, have a real close ear to the ground in terms of the challenges that our food producers are having, in terms of getting food into the hands of the people that need it.
Quickly, yeah.
Quickly, I just, yeah, I understand where it's coming from, you know, I'm part of the food chain, my business. And unfortunately, the big cojones, the FDA, because they determine, they want to know, if you eat something, they want to know where it's coming from. And so the, the, the tendency is to try to basically paper up over every transaction, which is what the resistance is to having people sell their product. And I think we can overcome that resistance with some reasonable look.
That's the role of our office, and the Buy Fresh By Local grant that you just signed off on recently, there are big components. There's grant writing for farm writers, there's resources, technical resources that we, the hundred thousand dollars from Mass Department Ag Resources goes into Buy Fresh By Local. It's not just all advertising, it's technical assistance to farmers, any farmer that's out there that needs help with paperwork, that is our role. Like contact extension, we will do that for you, and I'll, I'll have a presentation set to for you later in the year for you on that.
That's great. That's, that's really.
I appreciate it.
And that's something that really get out into the consciousness of the townspeople because then they will support that and, and highlight it. And so all this stuff, we're coming back with a lot more information. I think something's up with that radiator, but maybe it's not bad.
I have a buzzer right here that I'm.
I think it's doing fine. Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you for your time, though.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. We are going to go to the municipal, no, we didn't, oh, no, yeah, the Municipal Fire Training PFAS Remediation Site Project Update. Here's the team tackling this awesome problem. Did you hear from anybody, the independent, a couple of weeks ago? Okay. I mentioned your name, and then I recredited it. We'll talk about that afterwards. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, so I'd like you to introduce yourself and your team here.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm Paul Rosala. I am the Assets Manager for Barnstable County, and I'm joined here with our consultants, GZA. John, you want to give a?
Sure. I'm John, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out, show you my slides. I'm John Pacman. I am a principal level hydrogeologist with GZA Geo-Environmental. For this project, I served as the overall project coordinator and principal of, of, principal in charge of the project on GZA's behalf. I've met with you before.
Yes, and I want to welcome you back, but we need to have you known for the public.
Sure, sure. And, and I'm joined today with Jennifer McKechnie.
Yes, hi, Jen.
Hi, I'm a senior project commander with GZA, and I'm running the assessment portion of this project.
All right. If you recall, we broke up the project for efficiency sake into three teams, so she's running the investigation team part of it. I will, I will pinch hit for the remediation team and, and, and the data team as well.
Okay. So if you go to teams, I am trying to, go to the teams and then click on that, or click on this box right here. And then hit share.
And we also have on screen Bill, right?
Oh, yes.
Yes, yes, so.
Oh, we had Bill.
Yeah, Bill.
Still here, still here.
Yeah, I'll give you a quick intro. We, we brought Bill's company, Bill's company is GHD. We brought them in to, to support us as a subcontractor for the risk assessment work. So, Bill, do you want to introduce your, your technical background?
Hi, sure, folks. Morning commissioners, good, great to be here. I'm involved in my township's work, so it's kind of neat to see how another commission works. So this is really great to join you. So I'm an ecological, ecological risk assessor. So what that means is I basically assess the residual contamination that's out of site. So whether it's surface water, whether it's soil, whether it's sediment, I assess the risk to ecological receptors. So the birds, the bugs and bunnies, for lack of a better way of putting it. So I've been, I've been working with a group of GVA assessing what's left at the site after, after cleanup to determine what the ecological risks are, and I'll be presenting on that in a little bit.
Great. Okay, we're all, we're filled with anticipation, so.
So I, 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 I won't go into a lot of background because we talked about that before, but, yeah, just to, a little refresher, you know, the whole project is, is focused on complying with the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, the MCP, you know about that. And you know about how when we came on board, we. Uh, and you know about how when we came on board, we we took a very holistic or regional approach into looking at this project. Because it was such a large project and there's so many other sources nearby uh with plumes, you know, converging and mingling. And we had to look at the big picture here in order to 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 achieve our objectives. Um, and and one of the things that we've done and continue to do is bring the the public together on this project. So we we, you know, have routine discussions with with external stakeholders, including. Um, you know, including the folks from the airport, including folks from Silent Spring, including folks you know, Tom Cambrary, who's been. Uh, representing the Hyannis civics groups, civilian residential groups. Uh, we've had people from Yarmouth, you know, chime in and 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 help us out and give us their thoughts. So we've really brought the DEP shows up, USGS shows up. We brought a lot of people together to all give us, you know, input. And we share our information with them, they share theirs, and and we approach this thing as a team. And I think that's been very productive. In the past, and I hope it continues to in the in the future, as you know, that's our goal. Uh, so just to give you a little refresher on on the layout of the land, so to speak, on the site. Here's the fire training facility here. It's on the eastern shore of Flint Rock Pond. The. The, to the east of the site and hydraulic downgrade and groundwater flow is generally from the. The upper left-hand part of the screen down to the lower. Um, then following my cursor, that's sort of falling groundwater flow down to the lower uh right-hand corner of the screen. Um, we have uh the, as I said, the Mary Dunwells, we have um some, an additional water supply well here called the Airport One Well, which is used intermittently on a seasonal basis. And then we have the airport here, who has, as you know, has its own PFAS. Um, plumes, problems that they've had and they're addressing. And and we're working closely with them on that. Then we have the Mar Wells further down here and we have the Mill Creek uh area, Marsh area down here as well. And then the other, the other uh pertinent landmark to point out is the. The Barnstable Waste Water Pollution Control Facility or their wastewater treatment plant is down right down here. Um, and 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 so we've got, you know, lots of, lots of things going on in this area.
A lot of contributors.
A lot of contributors, exactly. And and, you know, there's been also talks of maybe some additional PFAS sources in this area. And up here as well. So there's a lot of things to look at here. Um, but I wanted to just set that 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 map in into your mind so as we go through our conversation here.
Right.
Um, so I thought I'd bring you up to date on our recent work since we last met. Um, so on the investigation side of things, we've installed sixteen additional multi-level monitoring wells. So not just shallow wells, but wells drilled all the way down to the lower clay layer that I spoke of before, which is. Which is serving as a lower confining layer to this plume. So those are not cheap to do, to get down deep in the drilling conditions on the Cape, takes special drilling, takes a little bit more time, but we, you know, we got that done. They helped us fill a lot of data gaps that existed. If you recall, the first thing we did is look at what are the data gaps here? And what do we need to do to fill those data gaps? So we've done that. That gave us a lot of information. We were able to pretty much define the extent of the plume. Uh, very well, actually, coming from the fire training facility. Um, what it also did though is that it identified another plume further south of us that the source of that. Is not well known right now. And the the airport had originally identified it, didn't really pursue it too much. Uh, but we've identified it and and the the question now is, is it related to the fire training facility? We'll talk about that a little bit more moving up.
Can you go to the map, John, and just show us the area that you're investigating?
Yeah, so so we have a plume. That other plume is is down in this area here. Okay. It's down here. Yeah, it's down here. And Jen has some better maps, so we'll show you as we move forward. I just wanted to set the stage in your mind. Okay?
And the groundwater flow there is is sort of from the west?
From the west to the east, but it's complicated because, and we'll talk about that as well. Because of the water treat, the water treatment facility, they take a lot of water that after they treat it. And they re-infiltrate it into the ground using all, each of these little squares are infiltration beds. So they're using that to reinject the water into the subsurface source and not waste the water. But that creates a big mound in the groundwater flow field and water flows downhill. So if you big mound, water flows in all directions off the mound. So that creates a big groundwater flow direction mound there. That creates more slightly complicated groundwater flow directions there.
So it's like changing the the flow of a of a watershed in a sense.
It is.
Am I thinking of that right?
It is, it is. It's like putting a hill in the middle of a watershed. Now that hill creates its own little watershed in the middle of the valley.
Right, so if those discharges were not there, uh, the the water would be flowing in a, in a different direction.
Direction.
Probably a bit more southerly.
In a local level, yes, yes.
What is the, what is the rate of the groundwater traveling through the subsurface in that area?
It's approximately one to one and a half feet per day. That's pretty fast. But it's the Cape Cod, it's Cape Cod, it's all sand, very permeable sand. It's the most homogeneous material that we have around here. It's often referred to as a big sandbox. And we're seeing that, it very high flow rates. And we've, we've quantified that, we've, we've actually done tests on that. And, yeah, so I I just wanted, you know, give you that layout as we present the rest. Um, so we've also gone in and we've instrumented a number, as you've noticed, you know, there's a lot of little ponds over there. Uh, these ponds, I've considered kettle ponds, it chunks of ice that broke off, but during the deglaciation. And then they melt out and you end up a little kettle there and groundwater flows through them now. Um, and and so they're in direct communication with groundwater, so we can't look at groundwater without looking at the ponds. Because the ponds are, in this case, a surface expression of groundwater. So it's all, it's all interrelated, so we have to look at everything.
Most of the ponds, the kettle ponds are an indication of groundwater, are they not?
In this, in this part of the world, yes, yeah. Um, and so we've done that. We've also put in little mini pismeters in there that allow us to measure, you know, the groundwater gradients in the ponds and below the ponds. And actually sample below the ponds and things like that. Um, we have developed a numerical groundwater flow model. That's a mathematical model of the situation here. It's a very detailed model. And very big, uh, rather than have to deal with the complications of just cutting a little circle or a little square around the site. And having to deal with those boundary conditions of that little square, we took the USGS's Capewide model, kept it as a Capewide model. And just refine the geology in the vicinity of your site. And that gives us more control. And it gives us more resolution because we cut back the grid spacing there, that model, so we can look at it more closely. And then we brought in the local geology that we've actually encountered at your site and around your site. Um, to bring it in because the USGS didn't have that amount of data when they developed theirs. So we've been doing that and and updating the model with USGS on our calls and and letting them know what we're doing. And I'm very happy that they're happy with what we're doing. In fact, we met with Dennis LeBlanc, who was involved with the original model. Way back when for the USGS, we met with him at the the site of about a month ago and he was great to 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 talk with as well. Um, so that's ongoing. We'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, and then, um, as you know, you know, we've been looking at the data from a first, a a a forensics perspective. Can we separate out the fingerprint of the of the water quality at your site from that around your site? To try to separate out those plumes. Is there a unique fingerprint there based on the the concentrations and the type of constituents that we're detecting? As a refresher, when we say PFAS chemicals, we lump that in as a general grouping of chemicals. But the fact is, there are thousands of PFAS constituents that are all part of the PFAS world, okay? And literally thousands, and like five thousand. And and so we only test for a small subset of those. That's what the laboratories can do right now. We test for about seventy or so total and we really, in this case. What is often in Massachusetts is we're looking at uh six constituents that Massachusetts regulates. So we're looking at trying to see, is there a unique fingerprint there? Using those six initially and then looking to branch out and see if can we get anything else from the other constituents that we're looking at. I hope the message I got with that convoluted discussion is, this is complicated.
Right.
Okay, and and so what we're going to present to you reflects that, okay? Um, so that's what we're doing on the investigation side. Um, on the ecological side, as we said.
Where you go to the ecological side?
Yeah.
The fingerprinting, how are we doing? I mean, had we figured that out yet?
Uh, it's not, it's not as clear as we'd like it to be. Let me say that. And I'm not sure that we're ever gonna get to a point where we can crystal, you know, clearly say, this is ours, this is yours. There's been too much mingling, co-mingling over the decades.
And the use of different phones makes it difficult because we don't know what phones they used and it was a mix from decades of use.
Exactly, multiple phones were used and we don't have records of that. You recall, the folks that used the facility in the past. Were the individual first responding agencies. They brought their own materials. We don't, and they don't have records of what they brought.
Right, those, those logs are with the fire department.
So we're, we were hoping we could tease out some sort of fingerprint with the data that we have. We actually brought all the data to one database and. And are we done looking at that? No, we're not done, okay? But so far, we've looked at it in a few multiple different ways and it's. The thing that's becoming very evident is this is complicated and we may not be able to get, tell you with any certainty. That there's a unique fingerprint here. And I'm being honest with you.
Can I just, because I know a little bit about this, reasons I'm not going to, but. It's it become, what you say about not being able to determine where the stuff's coming from, you know, it's just so complicated. I'm convinced that within the next decade or so, we're going to realize that this is a national problem. And that identifying point sources is going to be a waste of time. You're going to have to deal, I mean, to to stop the flow is is obviously, you know, a goal. But to try to put liability on individual organizations and so on, I mean, you know, it's, it'll, it'll. Teams of lawyers will make a fortune on it, but that's a first. I'm not going to get.
I'm leading in your direction. I think you're right.
Disagrees, Ron, about us being a national problem, a problem.
Absolutely.
For providing enough resources and funding to help do some of the investigative work and the remediation work. And to have some liability uh and accountability from the manufacturers. That's been a good debate.
No, there were hearings, actually, um, I listened to some of, some of it, and I'm trying to recall, I didn't listen to too many things, I reached too many things, but, um. He did just have, you know, those congressional hearings or of the like, uh.
In some states.
Sector hearings in.
Meanwhile, enormous financial liability is being placed on.
On towns, I understand what you're saying.
So it's somewhere and, and, you know, and it's, and as in, as the the minimum standards keep being reduced. The liability and the expense goes up and up and up beyond the ability of those individual entities to cover it. I mean, and I think we're all understanding this is a big problem. It's going to have to be, as Mark says, dealt with nationally, but meanwhile, we're in this box where, you know.
Yeah, and at the state level, and in fact, we've actually reached out to the state, and I'll talk about that a little bit later on, to help us with this, this conversation. And this question of what can we delineate and how, and how far do we take this? Okay, we'll talk about that. Uh, so that's where we are on the investigation in in terms of what we've done. And Jen will talk about the details that came out of that. We, as I said, we 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 brought in GHD to 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 support this project. We felt that GZA, although we do that. Our staff was stressed and and or stretched to the limit, I should say, and we weren't sure if we could give you just the level of service you needed within the timeframe. That you needed. So we brought in a subcontractors to support us. GHD has been great to work with and and I think you'll walk away from that once, once Bill gives you his update. Um, what we've done on that side is is GZA has continued to do the the fieldwork since we have crews here and GHD doesn't. Um, so we have collected some additional superficial soil samples to assess the extent of PFAS constituents in those. Soil samples near the pond and at the site and and near the site. Um, we have done some fish sampling, which sounds as much fun as you'd expect it to be, and people fought over that task. Uh, and that is simply going out fishing for a day and testing the fish.
Right.
Uh, nice work if you can get it. Uh, and so we've done that in Flint Rock Pond as well as Mary Dunn Pond. And we have those results and GHD's looked at that. They'll talk about that. Uh, we've done flying insect sampling. If you recall, we talked about that last time I was here. We've deployed light traps over the ponds. And we're able to collect literally buckets of of insects overnight and had those insects tested. And that's important because insects are the base of the food web.
Right.
So we have to look at that to see how is that impacting, um, you know, other, other animals. Um, and then we've also done Benthic organism sampling. So those are the the worms and the and the bottom dwellers in the ponds and things like that. Those results are being tested right now. Um, and so so we've got our data now and and with with GHD's input, we also expanded our database where they felt that we had data gaps. So we've got our database now and we've done our initial screening and now we're working on the rest of the of the ecological risk assessment. Okay, uh, so with that, Bill, do you want to discuss the ecological work? And I've got your, 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 uh, table showing.
All right, perfect. So, um, what you have here is a table and it's a list of different types of species that we looked at. So whenever we look at a site, you have to understand what are the kind of animals that are going to be at the site, what are the kind of, what, well, the plants at the site. What media are impacted? So we've got the surface water, sediment soils and the biota themselves. Uh, but if you look at that first column receptor type, so these are, these are things we call trophic guilds. These are just general types of organisms that you might see. An avian piscivore, like a blue heron. An aerial insectivore might be a tree swallow. So when you're doing an ecological risk assessment, you have to identify the critical species that could be at your site. And so not every site has every species, but this is a list of the types of, types of organisms you'd see there. The ones that we are looking at, um, when we do our modeling to do, determine the risk, that's the second column. Those are the surrogate receptors. So in other words, for, um, for an avian, like I said, an avian piscivore, you might have a great blue heron. So we use a great blue heron as a model. Um, the thing to think about is most of these organisms, we turn into a mathematical model. It's a black box. I could get into it, but it's, I don't think it's worth how we do it. But there's a lot of calculations that go into how much are they getting through the water? How much of the contamination are they getting through their food? How much contamination are they getting through incidental ingestion of, say, soil? So, uh, just to, you know, go back to thirty thousand feet again, this is the list of our receptors that we looked at. It's the list of the different media we looked at. And so John and his team have been great for getting us the the right data here. We have surface water data, we have sediment data. Really good quality data sets. We have soil, great quality soil data sets, and we now have the biota. So normally, when we were doing, we would do this, uh, we would do it without knowing what the biota is. And that introduces a lot of uncertainty into our numbers that we come out at the end. So, so the fact that, um, we've been able to go out and get this fish, get the aerial insects, get, you know, get the soil invertebrates. Or I'm sorry, the Benthic invertebrates, that has really helped in reducing the uncertainty. Related to the numbers that we're going to, I'm going to show you on the end, on the next slide. So, so this is a list of receptors, the the exposure media we looked at. And this essentially characterizes your site to the extent that the MCP wants. Are any questions here? So it's a, it's a, it's a pretty, pretty thorough evaluation we've done.
It's very.
Want me to, next slide?
Next slide, please, yes. Um, and this is where you get the good news. Um, so what we do when we assess risk is we take a value, let's say it's a dose. Like, you know, you take a, you you take a a pill for for acetaminophen or ibuprofen, it has, it has an amount in it. Um, so we 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 have two ways of looking at things. We look at what is the dose that, let's say, a great blue heron is getting during its, during its day. Or what is the concentration for something that lives in a medium? So Benthic invertebrates live in a medium. Um, plants live in soil, earthworms live in soil. So we, there's a direct comparison between a known value that's toxic. And a known value that's possibly not toxic. For, for organisms that, uh, have a dose, they eat a certain amount or get a certain amount of a chemical. Uh, per day, those are calculated per doses. And anyway, we take the, either the dose or that safe concentration. And we measure it against, uh, sorry, a dose or or medium concentration. And we measure that against a safe dose and a safe concentration. So when you see our, let's take Flint Rock Pond. So with Flint Rock Pond. Um, we, we know that, let's look at the red fox. It's a good one because it's at, it's at the bottom of the Flint Rock Pond. We have a no effects number. Okay, so we know, we have a dose that is out of the literature that is accepted, that says. Um, at a certain dose, this is safe. The number here reflects the ratio of the dose that the, uh, the. The number here reflects the ratio of the dose that the, uh, that the organism is getting to the safe dose. So anything less than one is good news. So as you can see, everything here is less than one under the no effects. This is, so this is absolutely no effects. This is totally safe, except two, uh, two of the, um, receptors. The first one's the benthic invertebrates in Flint Rock Pond at 1.7. I have it underlined and bolded. And the robin for site soils at 1.6. Now let me tell you, within my world, the risk assessment, those are only what we call them very minor exceedances. In other words, the no effects level, you're just above it. You're just a tad above the no effects level. And so in, in, in our world, in the risk assessment world, those numbers don't trouble me at all. Um, so now let's look at the low effects column under the hazard index. None of them are above one. And matter of fact, their magnitudes are lower than one, which means they, the risk is essentially de minimis. It's, um, very incredibly low. And so what I've done is I've categorized each of the areas, Flint Rock Pond, Mary Dunn Pond, the, the, the unnamed pond, um, that, that's sort of the vernal pool and site soils and characterize those as to what is the risk here? What does it look like from an ecological perspective? Flint Rock Pond looks great. You have one minor exceedance and with benthic invertebrates under the no effects. And, and you're well under one for low effects. Um, the, you look at the numbers for Mary Dunn Pond, well below one, orders of magnitude below one. From a modeling standpoint and risk standpoint, this is incredibly safe area right now. And keep in mind, um, a lot of this is post remediation. So for instance, the site soils, uh, these numbers might've been a lot higher prior to, you know, capping some of it with, with asphalt prior to digging some of the, the dirt out. But right now I can tell you that we've got very good news. Um, the site itself, Flint Rock Pond, Mary Dunn Pond, uh, and the unnamed pond as well as the soils all look good. Um, so this approach was, which is consistent with the MCP, MCP, uh, the, uh, MDP should be very happy with this.
That's great.
Any questions on that?
Do we know what it was before, uh, any remediation?
We don't have the data.
We don't have, you know, we didn't take, we didn't have all that stuff. That's too bad. Anyway.
Yeah. It doesn't seem that there's a lot of accumulation through the food chain. In other words, you have the, you know, the heron is eating the, the fish and the fish are eating worms and so on. You would think that it would accumulate through the food chain to the higher top organisms. That doesn't seem to be the case.
No, it doesn't. And as a matter of fact, um, the reason why it was good to get the fish data, for instance, is that when you model it, there's ways of modeling a fish tissue concentration from, say, water or sediment. There's ways of doing that. And, and those tend to be very conservative. In my experience, when you do that, you get much higher numbers than you do when you actually go out and collect the, the, the fish or the invertebrates or whatever the other biota is. So, um, it's better to have the data. We have the data and it's actually showing there is not a lot of bioaccumulation. And part of that's probably due to the properties of the sediments, for instance. Uh, if they have high total organic carbon, PFAS like to, to be in that medium and they, they become less bioavailable. PFOA, PFOA is a different story. That tends to wash out of a system. And that may very well happen here and it's, it's not as bioaccumulative as you might think it would be.
This, this is good news. Uh, I appreciate this. Okay. Any other questions here? No. All right. Continue, please. However, is.
I think that, that takes us to Bill's presentation. Bill is actually multitasking. He's on the West Coast at a conference right now. So if we're done with Bill, we could let him go.
We're going to let you go, Bill. And I thank you. I think we've met before. Uh, GHD works with, well, fleet.
Yeah. Well, well, thank you for having me here. I'm happy to present the data to you. Hopefully it meets your expectations.
It does. It's great news and enjoy your conference.
It's a modern world that you can attend this meeting here.
Yeah.
Is it great?
It gives all that incredible information.
A key or in the West.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, it's great. It's scary. Okay. Those are the good things about it. Thank you.
Thanks. So I, I'll make a general comment on the hu- you've heard the ecological risk. I'll make a general comment on the human health risk. We started that, that we're doing in-house. We have a, a person who's doing it, um, is a PhD from Harvard Public Health. Very qualified to do it. Um, and she's been working for us forever, 20 some odd years, almost, you know? And, um, she's taken an initial screening on, at this and we don't have all of her results yet because it's ongoing. Uh, but her screening results are also favorable. And the big reason for that is that you guys did the right thing in that you, when, when you knew, when you learned about this, you put in the wellhead treatment and that eliminated the, the major exposure pathway through drinking water. So when you eliminate that pathway, that cuts out a lot of risk to human health. So now she's looking at other exposure pathways, things like, you know, contact with waters of the ponds, even under the, the unlikely circumstance that someone might go into the pond. Um, things like that. So we're looking at those things as well. Um, but the fact that you cut back the, you know, the, the, the exposure via the drinking water pathway is, is huge. And, and so we don't expect to see, I don't have all the results yet, but I don't expect to see a, a lot of issues that would come out of the human health risk assessment.
That's very good news. Yes.
I don't want to be there, you know? They say a little bit about this. I've heard it said that if you drink the water, or sit, you know, they have some PFAS in it for 70 years, you have a one in a million chance of having adverse health effect. Now, I don't know if that's true or not. That's just a cliche.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, there's billions and billions and billions of dollars being dumped into this. Whereas the actual health effects on the population are still not. You know, so at some point we're going to have to try to bring those numbers together. What are we trying to do?
I fully agree with you. Fully agree with you. I, I don't know the numbers. I haven't looked at those studies. I'm a geologist, not a human health person. Yeah, I can tell you what goes on underground. I don't know about what goes on in the human body, but, but I, I, I wouldn't be surprised.
No, I mean, I, I, there's no justification for dumping anything in the water that's injurious to people's health. But at some point, we've been doing this for hundreds of years. We have to, and we only have, even with the trillions of dollars that go into it, our resources are limited. So we have to understand, and I'm sorry to be preachy, but.
That's fine.
You know, you have to understand as to what we're actually doing, what we hope to accomplish within the money we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
So with that, Jen, do you want to walk us through the findings on the geology and groundwater and things like that?
Yes. So this is a cross-section. So basically a vertical cut through the earth from west of Flint Rock Pond, um, all the way to east of Mary Dunn Pond. Um, and this yellow here, um, represents the glacial outwash deposits that dominate this area. So basically sands with some varying amounts of silt and gravel. Um, and as John had mentioned, underlying these at about 50 to 70 feet below ground surface is this silty clay layer, um, this brownish color down here. And that has a much lower permeability, um, so it's limiting, um, the flow of that contaminated groundwater vertically.
It's a good thing. Very good thing.
Yes, I see that, yeah.
And, and we've characterized that sand now. So prior to our involvement, it was just speculative as to what the permeability that is, how deep it was in some cases. A lot of it was, it was inferred.
Right.
Okay. We've actually gone in, we've confirmed the depths and you can see we've got some result, some, uh, relief in that, that layer. We now have that built into our, our analysis. And we've actually taken samples of that material and, and tested it for grain size distribution, which allows us to actually test the, the permeability of that material. So we have actual quantitative numbers now, which is much better.
That's great.
Some of the information that you shared with Dennis LeBlanc.
He, oh, he gets.
He wants to, I'm sure he was excited about that.
He likes what we're doing, I think.
I can, I can, looking at this right now and I'm thinking, boy, boy, Dennis would have really enjoyed that.
He enjoyed our walkthrough the other day. That's for sure. He came by to see the PRV being installed.
He did. We're good.
Great.
Um, this is another cross-section, but now we're going from Mary Dunn Pond south, um, to the airport property. Um, and you can see the geology is very similar. We still have this, um, layer of glacial outwash sands in yellow and it's under lain by that silty, um, clay layer. And moving on to, um, groundwater flow patterns. So John definitely touched on this earlier, um. To understand groundwater flow across this whole area, um, we've done quarterly groundwater gauging rounds. So taking depths water at all the wells at the MFTF site, um, and we also, I lost my cursor there. We also took ground, um, gauged all the wells at the airport, um, and at the Barnstable Water Pollution Control. So we're able to take these numbers and create, um, a groundwater elevation plan. Um, this is for the shallow wells. So we have wells, um, that are set at the water table itself. Those are, which we refer to as the shallow wells, as well as some deeper wells below the water table, but above, above that clay layer. Um, so these blue lines are lines of equal groundwater elevation or hydraulic head and water flows perpendicular to these lines. Um, so we have flow, as we had mentioned, from, um, the MFTF to the southeast, um, towards the Mary Dunn, um, wells. And you'll see there is some flow to the northeast, um, in the vicinity of the Mary Dunn wells as they're pulling water towards them. And then flow changes more to the south as we get to this air one supply well and across the airport to those MAR wells at, um, the southern edge. And then it's.
For the, um, for the, the groundwater flow that's sort of from east to west, you can see that it's sort of water moves nor, in a northerly direction from the wastewater treatment plant and the mound.
Yeah, that's what I was about to mention. Yeah.
You're going to get into this.
Yeah, just as John had mentioned, um, down at the Barnstable Water Pollution Code, just as he said, um, they're infiltrating water here. So we have this mound of water. So the water's flowing sort of radially away from it. So we have this flow, we gauge the wells on this side. So we can see the flow going to the northeast and to the southeast in this area.
And I'd like to give a little call out to the folks at the wastewater treatment plant. They've been great to work with. They've gotten, shared their reports with us. They've given us access to sample and gauge their wells. They've been great to work with.
I, I have a question. Does development change the direction of the flow of groundwater?
Me like residential development?
Yeah, residential or even, you know, uh, commercial. If it's, you know, you're pounding, you know, we had, there was one house that just pound, you know, put it on stilts in a sense, pounded.
Yeah.
The house is gone.
Yeah.
However, um, you know, I keep thinking, uh, if we did that to a lot of different, um, businesses or something to anchor.
That's not going to happen. No.
All right.
No, you have.
I think the development impacts are on, they're already reflected.
Contribution.
No, they're reflected in the broader dimensions of this analysis. In that the amount of water that is pumped to provide a water supply.
Right.
All right.
That, that.
And the amount of water that's discharged and affecting the flow. So if you have massive development that contributes more and you will see those impacts in some degree.
It would have to be very large. Yeah. It would have to be centralized as well. If that, if those reinjection, if you have a number of septic systems all injecting a little bit, spread out, it's, it'll have some impacts in a very, very localized area, but on a regional level, not so much.
And if you look at these wells, these wells are produce, they're pumping out a fairly large.
Absolutely.
Great, large volumes. So the amount of water that we're talking about to make this kind of influence in groundwater flow is quite significant.
Absolutely.
The thing, yeah. But what I'm intrigued with is, is that you add the discharge in one location or the multiple discharge. How many wells do they have to discharge or how many at the treatment plant?
They don't use wells. They use infiltration beds.
Which you can sort of.
Those square shaped.
Yeah, the square shape.
How many of them are there?
You can see the beds.
I don't think I ever counted them, but maybe. Yeah. It's 10 plus. Yeah.
Plus.
Yeah.
Right. So water is discharged through those.
And they, and they use them, they, they don't use them all at the same time. They use certain beds at certain times and while they're re- refurbishing others, they let them dry out. They, they skim off, my understanding is they skim off some of the sludge that might develop on them or something like that. And they have their own procedures. Am I up on all of them? I'm, I'm not. So please understand that. But I know that they, they use different beds at different times to, to, to comply with their needs at the time, their operational needs at the time.
Does the data show that it's all kind of moving generally in one direction or do we see?
We don't have enough wells to give us the resolution to do that. Okay. So we look at it as one big facility.
So we know there is some flow.
Yeah.
Moving water in.
Yeah.
Sort of northeasterly.
Yes.
Directly.
Exactly.
A month.
In, in general talk, we're hoping to help refine that in the next couple of months. And still talk about how we're going to do that.
One thing I would just add to, as the town of Barnstable continues to expand their municipal sewer system, west, they're further going to collect that water that was dispersed maybe through septic systems into a municipal system, routing all of that water now back to this plant or another alternate disposal sites of the mound that we have. Depending how they manage it, could, could change over the next few years as they put more people online and definitely 10 or 15 years. Um, so this, this model is, you know, it's, it's, it's never going to be, you know, done. It's going to reflect the development and the change in the system and.
All right. Um, so as I mentioned, that was the groundwater contour plan for those shallow wells. We also, um, created a plan for the wells that are screened below the water table, which we refer to as the intermediate deep wells. As you can see, the groundwater contour plan looks almost exactly the same. You still have the flow to the southeast through the Mary Dunn wells, to the south, to the MAR wells. And we're still seeing a mound here, um, with a little bit of radial flow from the Barnstable Water Pollution Control. Um, flipping over to the more exciting data.
If you go to presentation, that makes the image bigger.
I don't know if we can stand it.
I can't move this.
You drag that to appear as in that part of the screen, but maybe if you go, click on the presentation, maybe that'll make the image bigger. There you go. How's that?
Oh, there we go. Much better. But you can't see my cursor anymore.
That's a.
Oh, you can? Okay.
Oh, yeah, even better.
Um, so this is, um, the results of our sampling of the groundwater. Um, the blue shading is the PFAS six sun, um, in groundwater. So John mentioned in Massachusetts, there's six regulated PFAS compounds. Um, and we looked at the sum of these, the drinking water standard, um, is 20 for the sum of the six. Um, so the darkest blue here is, um, represents concentrations over a thousand nanograms per liter. A little bit lighter, the next blue is 100 nanograms per liter. And then this last contour is 10 nanograms per liter, which would be half of the drinking water standard. Um, so this is from a sampling round conducted in May. We collected samples from over 80 wells at the MFTF site. And we coordinated this with the airport who did their own, um, groundwater sampling round across the airport. And we're able to put all this data together to kind of look at the plumes on this more, um, regional level. Um, so this is for the shallow wells, um, the plume stretches from the MFTF site to the southeast to the, these Mary Dunn wells and a little bit past Mary Dunn Pond. Um, you can also see the two plumes at the airport, which the airport, um, is addressing. Um, and then.
Can you just stop right there for a second?
Yep.
So we've identified that there's an area that is not contaminated between the plumes to the north, close to the.
It's at least below 10 nanograms per liter. So it's might be.
There may be some PFAS contamination there, but it's at levels.
Yep. And this is in the shallow. So just keep in mind, I'll flip to the deeper.
All right. One shouldn't assume that there are two distinct plumes there. They could be connected in some way.
It diffusesly.
Yeah, it's possible.
Right. But we're delineating in the higher concentrations.
Right. Mm-hmm. And then, as John had mentioned before, there's this offsite plume that the airport had also identified, but the source of this plume is unknown at this point. Um.
We've dubbed that the mystery plume. Actually, the, the airport originally dubbed it as the mystery plume, if I recall correctly. So it seemed appropriate for us to continue to use that term.
So are you also certain that there's a break on the roadway headed?
Um, no, this is unclear. We put a bunch of question marks here. There's just no wells in between this area.
Wells in the middle of the road.
Yeah, no, the slate shattered. Really complex, right?
But we do have some data that suggests there is some separation between the plume, uh, for the, for the, that's coming from the fire training facility and the mystery plume. We have, we have enough data that we feel pretty comfortable that separation probably exists.
Can you put your cursor around the mystery plume?
It's weird. I keep, I hear my cursor.
You want to be.
Oh, and it's which, this is the mystery plume.
That, that whole area?
This whole plume, yes.
Exactly.
The zone of contribution, the green, the green dashed line.
Yeah.
So that's.
If you look at the water flow and you look at the existence of the treatment plant, to me, the treatment plant would certainly be a potential candidate.
It is.
Right.
The source of that PFAS.
It is.
So I'm not, I'm not saying anything crazy here.
Yeah, I'll let you, let's, let's look at the intermediate deep well, um, plume map, and then I'll talk about where we are on that.
So I, well. So I, while we're doing that, I, you know, we were talking about, um, wastewater and how we're gonna deal with it. And they were talking about the different pipes and how all the pipes are now lined with plastic. So I said, well, doesn't that just, just the flow of that going through that plastic, does that pick up PFAS? Because PFAS is in plastic. And he said, I was waiting for that question. This was, that GHD, another uh, group. And so even if we have everything, if we're putting it through plastic, are we just kind of defeating? I mean, is there, is there a residual?
Yeah, I haven't studied that or researched it, but the first thing that comes to mind.
For you.
Yeah, yeah. I'll put that in my next change order.
Yeah.
No.
Does it have an impact?
Uh, what, the first thing that comes to mind is just depends on the type of plastic, because not all plastics are the same.
Right.
And so for our sampling work, we rely heavily on something called, um, high density polyethylene, HDPE. Because it's low or non-existent in PFAS. So, and I think most of those discharge pipes are made out of HDPE. It's the dark black stuff. And that's typically HDPE as opposed to LDPE, which is low density polyethylene. There's a whole bunch of other plastics out there. You know, I'm not a materials engineer, but, um, that's the first thing I would be thinking about. And if it's HDPE, I'm less concerned about it.
Okay. So there are differences in the plastic and it would make sense that they would use the least.
I would hope.
I would hope too.
I would hope.
Okay, that's
Yeah. I know, like, I'll take it to another level. Um, when, when the whole PFAS thing came up, um, laboratories were under the microscope because a lot of the laboratory instruments use Teflon for their tubing and their sealants and everything like that. So laboratories had to go in and basically de-Teflon all their equipment. So that, you know, they weren't contaminating. So they had to deal with that as well. And they were able to do that using better plastics and better sealants and things like that.
That's good to know. All right. Thank you.
Um, so this is, um, the PFAS six concentrations in the intermediate and deep wells at the site. And you can see the plumes look different, um, now, uh, to the west of the site.
To the west of what site?
To the west of the MFTF site, um, in Flint Rock Pond, you can see that we're seeing detections above at least ten nanograms per liter, um, which we didn't see in the shallow. Um, we did look at the flow rates of these two, um, Barnstable Fire District supply wells to see if they could potentially be pulling water back, back from the site. Um, but based on our numerical modeling, it doesn't appear that they would be pulling contamination all the way back from the MFTF. It appears that there's some sort of offsite source we have not identified yet that is contributing PFAS to this area.
Uh, if the groundwater flow is from the west to the east, then how did that get there? Right? I mean, if we're thinking that the MFTF
Right.
Is the source, it would be moving to the east, but
Yeah. Me, me, for, for the Barnstable Fire District wells?
Yes, yep.
So, so that is
Looking at that area, I don't see how that comes from the MFTF.
We agree with you. And, and we went into this, you know, skeptical, uh, because, uh, you know, the other folks had commented that they didn't think it was coming from us, but we recognized it was right next to us. Maybe it was some pathway. We looked at it as well.
So we're scratching our heads a little bit in terms of, it's another mystery plume.
Oh, and exactly. And, and so
Plume number one, mystery.
Multiple sources. It definitely surprised us because there's so many potential sources of PFAS out there in the world.
Concentrations there are conceivable to come from some of the industrial area that's north.
It's, it's possible. It could also be also coming from the wastewater treatment plant. Some of our modeling work suggests that, that the mound is sufficient that we could be pushing some amount of constituents up that far.
That's incredible.
So that's something we have to look at a little bit further.
Know that's
We don't know yet. It could be coming from I like your way of thinking. Um, but, but that is something we have to look at. So we've already started that. So, and I'm sorry to get out of sequence, Jen. I'm sorry.
The green, the green dashed area
Yeah.
Yeah. Indicates a zone of contribution from the wastewater plant.
It does.
Uh, no, the green line is for this, um, Barnstable Fire District five. This is a water supply well here. That's under extreme pumping conditions. This would be the zone of influence. So it does potentially go all the way back to the
Different zones, Paul. The zone of contribution, right, and zone of contribution to the water supply. And then there's the zone of influence in terms of the wastewater discharge.
Well, that's to the well. That's, that's the zone of influence to the well.
Right.
So that's how far the well is reaching out to pull its water.
Where's the, where's the well? Are those the green boxes that are there?
Yes. Um, this well right here.
Whose wells are those? Those are the
Barnstable Fire District.
Got it.
Okay, so
There's a source of contamination affecting those wells that is not, that's still a mystery.
We don't know where it's coming from. Is it wastewater treatment plant? Or is it another source nearby of further upgrading it or not? So what we've done is, you know, start, you know, you start with the easier, simpler things first. Is we ordered a, a commercial, a, uh, a company that keeps records. And, and they usually do it for property transaction stuff. So we requested from them records for street directory information throughout this area. And, and that came back with thousands of names of people that own properties or owned properties in the past. And then, you know, using our younger, smarter people than us, they did some AI work and smart searches and everything else. And they've been culling out those properties that are not likely to use PFAS, like residential properties and doctors' offices and things like that. And, and what we're, what we're trying
Use PFAS, but not in the
Not enough that we're gonna worry about. Yeah. But what, what we're looking for are things like metal finishing facilities or, or other manufacturing facilities, things that are significant.
Right.
And so they're working on that now and, and we're making progress. But what we're trying to do is identify other potential sources in that area that might be contributing to this. To, as, again, when we look at these investigations
This is where the challenge for our work, where we begin, where, where we're gonna have to start drawing the line a little bit.
Exactly.
We can only, you know, from my point of view, we can only go offsite so far.
Exactly.
And then after a while, someone else will have to pick up that work.
Fully agree.
But I would assume the, the, the water district is probably concerned about. You wanna jump in here, Paul?
Yeah, prefer the MCP, you know, John, as far as, now you have the question marks, the water district. And we had the point where we won't have to explore anything for, we know that we're being contributed, you know, from that, it's traveling toward us. For our site specifically, we, we essentially draw a line, hey, there's some other plume coming from that area. We don't know what it is. We'll hand it over to DEP. If DEP or the water district wants to look, they can look from there.
Exactly.
So that's one, one interpret.
So we're at that point now where we have enough information about the contamination where we can begin to see where maybe some others will have to
Yes. What we're trying to do is, is strengthen our argument with a multiple lines of evidence approach. So we can have one line of evidence that is a hydraulic line of evidence, groundwater flow directions. That's good. But then we have another line of evidence that says, not only do we think it's, you can't get there because of hydraulics, but there's also these other sources that are upgraded that may be contributing. So because of multiple lines of evidence and, you know, I, I was always taught to be, get multiple lines of evidence that all point in the same direction, it increases the probability that the, the truth is there.
Yes.
Okay. So that's what we're trying to do to give you a stronger argument for why we don't think that that belongs to us.
Right.
Does that make sense?
The original mystery plume.
Yeah.
The original mystery plume, though, there's still, um, some data to be investigated.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a wide, it's a wide gap. Yeah.
Yeah. So what we're trying to do there, actually, I'll let Jen fill that in and then I'll, I'll chime in after.
Um, yeah, so moving on to the mystery plume, um, in the intermediate and deep, you can see it, it spans across at least the western portion of the airport, all the way down to the Mar Wells, all of the wells in here that were sampled at the time.
Can you just put a cursor on the Mar Wells?
Right here.
I want to make sure that for people that are watching, they can see that. Those are the Mar Wells. They're in green. And they are getting PFAS treatment, right?
They all are.
Now, are we paying for them? No.
That's it.
Yeah, no. We have a settlement with just Mary Dunn. We have a settlement.
Mary Dunn, you know, so that's on, that's on the town of Barnstable.
Yes. And this well had treatment on the airport well, the air one well as, as well. But that well only operates seasonally because, as we understand it from Hans, is that that well is not, um, uh, winterized. So they can't operate it during cold months. So, so I think they use it on an as needed basis.
And the Mary Dunn Wells, just for education purposes, can you just put the cursor on those?
Mary Dunn Wells are up here.
The green box is right up there. Bingo.
There we go. Okay.
And we're taking care of the PFAS. That's part of our settlement. Correct.
All right.
Uh, so this
This is great work.
Yeah, it is. And it really is amazing.
So this offsite plume, we're, we would like to understand better, um, you know, the extent of it and where potential sources for it. Um, when we created this, um, plume map, only, I keep losing my cursor. Um, the airport had only sampled, um, three sets of wells over here. They're highlighted in yellow, this set, this set. And a set up here. So this is based off a limited data set. Um, so we did get permission from the airport to go ahead and sample, um, all of the wells in here. Um, so that we can define, um, this plume better.
So how many public water supply wells are in that area?
Over here, none.
None. Okay.
Yeah, what we're trying to do here is define, you know, the source of that mystery plume. Is it
So those are monitoring wells. Those are
Yes, those are all monitoring wells. Correct.
And they were installed ten, fifteen years ago by the airport. They don't go down as deep as we'd like, but they're a good starting point. So since they haven't been tested for a long time, let's test them now. Unfortunately
You know why they put the wells in?
When they were doing their initial investigation, they tested them then and stopped. They concluded that it wasn't needed to do long-term monitoring of them. So
Because they identified the offsite.
It did identify that. Uh, and they concluded that that plume was not likely associated with their sites of, that's where that stopped. And, and I understand and I respect that, you know? Um, the question now is, what is the source of that? And, and it, it comes in, in that, you know, we, we can't forget that the fire training facilities plume made it into the Mar Wells. That's how they detected the fire training facility plume is when it was found in the Mar Wells. So we know that for some period of time, I'm sorry, the Mary Dunn. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, it made it into the Mary Dunn Wells. And, and so we can't ignore that. And so for some period of time, there was PFAS constituents from the fire training facility
Right.
Getting into the, into the distribution network. And that water then would have ultimately been, been discharged to mostly the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
For, you know, for those that use municipal sewer. Um, and therefore, you know, the question then becomes, is the mystery plume an expression of the, the, the secondary source of our stuff being discharged at the wastewater treatment plant or not?
Now, my understanding, there was some controversy over the rate of pumpage of those Mary Dunn Wells. For quite some time, they were being pumped and withdrawing water at a fairly excessive rate, which I'm sure played a role in drawing in some of the contamination.
Uh, I think it was gonna go there anyway. And, and we say
I disagree.
Yeah.
But I think to some degree, if you're talking about, um, those wells and how they were utilized, I mean, there's an interesting history.
Yeah. I mean, you, you look at our model, and our model shows that the majority of our plume from the fire training facility goes right into the Mary Dunn Wells. And that's a natural point to go.
I don't, I don't, I don't dispute that. The, the liability and the fact that we need to take care of that and we've been doing that.
So what we're trying to do now is assess the source of that mystery well mainly because, you know, is it tied to the wastewater treatment plant or not? And that's a fair question. If it's tied to the wastewater
Mystery plume.
The mystery plume, I'm sorry. If it's tied to the wastewater treatment plant, then, you know, what contribution is from us over the years? Okay. And that's gonna be a tough one to figure out.
Mystery plume is headed towards the Mar Wells.
It is.
There could be multiple sources.
It could be multiple sources.
Understanding what the concentrations are in this area, um, sampling both at the airport and we'll also sample the wells at the Barnstable Water Pollution Control should help us understand what this plume map looks like now at least.
Pumping at three million gallons a day roughly, right? Isn't there a zone of contribution that's been identified associated with those wells?
I'm sure there is. Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure that might help answer the question in terms of how we might be contributing or how the M1, MFTF plume.
Yeah, we're, we're less
Not there yet?
We're not there yet. Okay. Because the question is how much got past the Mary Dunn Wells and, and made it down to the Mar Wells. Okay? And that's what, something we're trying to sort out. That's, that's a difficult, it sounds easy, but it's a difficult thing to quantify.
Right.
Okay, without having the data, because they weren't monitoring for it at the time. Um, and, and, and then, you know, the question is, how much of the mystery plume originated through the secondary introdi- introduction or discharge, I should say, discharge of the Hyannis Water District water through the wastewater treatment plant? Okay, because the wastewater treatment plant doesn't treat for PFAS. That's not something that
Is it treating it now?
I don't think they do right now.
No, I don't think there's the instrumentation.
And that's common. That's common.
That's common?
Yeah.
Is that, isn't that something that's possible, though?
It's caught, it's all about money.
Oh, so it could be done, but it's just not
Correct.
To our knowledge.
The other huge contributing factor here is that PFAS, as we mentioned at the beginning, is, is everywhere. So there's a residential, you know, all these industries that hook up to the, the gravity sewer system hangars. If you had a, you know, a metal plating facility that was just dumping this, you know, whatever, high volume of PFAS wastewater trans- uh, treatment plants pumping it along through to, so you start to really see there's, there's been a huge contribution from others. We're not sure really where we
That's where it gets very difficult here.
Into here.
Is, is how much of that, if it's coming from the wastewater treatment plant, it's possible, given the, with the hydraulics that we have here. The question is how much of it comes from us versus other sources?
Right.
Uh, they're just ubiquitous, including residential.
Exactly.
People washing their Scotch guarded clothing or, you know, that contributes PFAS into their laundry machines that gets discharged into the municipal sewer.
Right. And one home might not be a big deal, but when you have this concentrated and we're having more density and neighborhoods being
Now, let me jump in here for a minute. Just hand us it, you know. We have to do the science to understand how this happened, but basically the science is there to help us make the decisions down the road is what we're gonna do about it.
That's right.
That's why we hired you.
That's right.
It's gonna come to us eventually saying, here's the situation. What are we gonna do about it? And unless, my understanding, unless we're gonna do pump and treat systems on this, which would be very expensive, chances are we're not gonna do much about the, the plume itself. I mean, to clean it up. Am I, am I wrong?
Well, we've already done something at plume at your facility. Okay, which, which I think will be very effective and, and cost effective as well compared to pump and treat. I'm not a big fan of pump and treat. It's very inefficient in this situation. Okay? But we haven't even started to think about anything else. The real question is, is it even feasible to separate out your contribution versus the, all the other ubiquitous contributions in town? And that is, that is something we're wrestling with. And, and so, so we reached out to the DEP on that. And we posed that question. Can you help us, you know, where do we draw the line here? Even if we were to explore these secondary sources, how would we separate it out?
Right.
How do we quantify that?
The question, the question I'm asking is, is that even if we do all this and we understand who's giving tribute to what, it still comes down to us, what are we, what, what is the threat here? In other words, what are we trying to, what is the threat that we're trying to
Fully agree with you.
And that starts from the individuals affected by it, individual homeowners, individual businesses. So we start from them. Now, you said, opening your discussion, we did the right thing because we, we assured that the ground, the drinking water would be clear of PFAS. I say, so what do we do after that? In other words, my, you know, you, you guys, and, and I don't blame you, that's what your job is, to look at it from top down. This is what's happening. My job is to look at it bottom up, you know, I have people, population there, you know? What is the threat to them?
Sure.
You know what? We assess that threat.
Yeah.
And then we work backwards to say, what do we do to mediate that threat?
Right.
And, and having the science helps us because we can, we can eliminate the point sources, right? At least as best we can. But then we have to anticipate it over the text, twenty, thirty, forty years, takes the stuff to head into Lewis Bay or wherever it's going, that what can we do to minimize any health effects? And I know you're, I don't know what the health effects are. It's a big debate about that. But ultimately, I'm looking to apply this knowledge to, to some kind of proposal, some kind of policies that are gonna mitigate the health effects of
Right. We don't wanna keep contributing just because we know we can fix it.
And there's a financial, there's a financial take to that because somebody's
Well, we're not contributing. We're remediating. We've got a, what appears to be an effective response with this reactive wall dealing with our site. And quite frankly, the success of our efforts could very well provide answers to the others
Right, absolutely.
Who may need to remediate, take some action under their own. I think what I'm hopeful for is that with your discussions with DEP, we can clearly delineate how far we go and how we're, we're our work and
Exactly, and that's.
Give some guidance to the others because it looks like the town of Barnstable, uh, the airport and other parties. Um, you know, have clearly some more work to do.
But, but how do we delineate that? That's something we're wrestling with is how do you delineate? Cause it got into the wastewater treatment plant. Then it's dispersed throughout that mound that we spoke of, where do we end and how do we, and could we ever effectively delineate that? So we, 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 we approached that question with the D E P, high level D E P. And, and they acknowledge that this is a big question that the D E P needs to weigh in on.
Yeah.
Because the M C P, well, to answer another question of yours, it is very much risk-based, so that's good for you. It's focused on not remediating just to remediate, but remediate to eliminate risk. That's good. Okay, and that's goes for what you were getting at. But on the other hand, it also requires us to delineate the, the disposal site boundary. And right now it's hard to know how far we need to chase that if we're chasing it throughout the, throughout Hyannis. Or anything, anywhere close to this wastewater treatment plant or other areas where groundwater may have been discharged.
Right.
So that's why that question's out there. They're looking into it, they're, they're discussing it at the state level, D E P. And we're waiting for a response back from them, but they are very sympathetic for the situation we're in and very unique situation that we're in. And I say it unique only on a temporal level, it's unique right now, but I think we all, you know, think that this is something that. Could become more common in the future as other plumes are impacting other wells, municipal drinking wells.
You're talking about elsewhere.
Elsewhere, other parts of the state.
Now, I think we, we've had this discussion before about how serious the PFAS.
Yeah.
Problems are. That's one of the reasons why we're doing, you know, well testing, that's the reason why we're doing some other initiatives.
We're doing the right thing, for sure.
No, and I think I'm, I'm excited about the permeable reactive wall.
That's the next, the next slide, I think.
Let's move this way, we're gonna be here.
Do you have any more time, uh, time or?
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Sorry.
Like two, two minutes probably, two, three minutes.
Sorry.
No, this is the most important piece right there. Okay, I just wanna make sure we have time or.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. That's my process the most. Uh, okay, so, um, good timing. So, so update on the P R B, the permeable reactive barrier. The, the, the good news, it's done, it's installed, it's injected, okay? We injected it between July and October. Uh, no significant issues while it was being installed. We kept the D E P in, 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 involved and updated. They, they made a, a few trips out to the site, uh, and showed even some younger staff around and, you know, did it as a training thing, which is great. Love it, okay? We had a, a site tour with the public out there, um, including with, with, uh. The Hyanna Civic Group there and, uh, they were happy. And, and we brought the town of Yarmouth who's out there and they participated. Uh, you, as I mentioned, Dennis and, and Melissa from U S G S participated, walked it. So. Again, you've been very transparent, letting people see what you're doing and, and people were very, responded very well. Um, so the, the results of the pilot tests are ongoing. Technically, our pilot test is a years-long monitoring. And so that's, that's wrapping up now, this, at the end of this year. Um, and the results are shown in this graph. And as you can see, the graph, you know, starts out, these are concentrations in the highest concentration of, at your site. And do the pilot test, inject the carbon is a vertical line here is when we injected the carbon. And then the next sample that we collected was down here. So. Next, you know, those, those samples dropped to, to very low to non-detectable levels.
So it's working?
It's working.
Yeah.
Okay, and they continue to, you know, the, the next two samples continue to show the same, the same result. Okay, they're very, we're, we're testing it, you know, less than two parts per trillion or so on, uh, overall, uh, to non-detect.
Sort of evaluate the performance of that.
Yeah.
Those vacations where they coordinated with D E P, they know.
They're, we had a plan for that and, uh, they're, they're, we were sampling, um, upgrading to the barrier, within the barrier and downgrade to the barrier. And, and we also are sampling from high, low, you know, it shallow, intermediate, deep. And, and it's, it's all very favorable. And that's why those early favorable results that we're seeing. Allowed us to recommend to the county that they proceed with the full scale right away, just to get it done and, and. And, and, and to use up the ARPA fund as well. You had timeframes on, on that. So, so we proceeded and injected the full scale even before we had. Officially finished the pilot test, just get the results were just so favorable. So, so the full scale is in, then the first post, uh, in- injection monitoring will be done in January. Mid to late January. We wanna give some time there for the carbon to settle in and soak to the soil. Right now, if you were to go out there and start testing, it did probably be at some carbon and, you know, uh, suspended in the water column, cause it, you know, it's, it's brand new. Okay, but this stuff is very, very fine-grained material and, uh, you have to let it stick to the soil grains, okay?
I forgot the name of the company.
It's Regenesis, it's, it's a name.
Name of the product?
The product is called Plume Stop. I should have brought, I should have brought my sample to show you.
Nice to be clear.
Yeah, yeah.
What this is.
Yeah, so, so that's all good. Uh, to, to install that, we installed twenty seven new. What we're calling performance verification wells, down gradient of the barrier. Uh, and that's to allow us to have very specific monitoring points. Uh, so those are in and we're seeing, and we'll be sampling those. Uh, as I said, in January, um, so that's where we are there. So that's a short slide, but it's, it's a big activity on your part.
Slide, yeah.
Okay, uh, so here's the alignment of it and, and so the alignment goes down the, the down gradient eastern property line. And, and then, yeah, I can't see. I gotta get this thing out of here, uh. And so the alignment goes down the property line, or actually the fence lines, what we did, we kept it inside your fence line and then brought it, you know. To, to the, uh, to approximate to the, to the, uh, pond shoreline. Um, so that's, that's good. This is the area of the pilot test down here. By the way, we, what we did is, you know, this is the highest concentrations. We did the pilot test right where your highest concentrations were. And, and the, the P R B was, was designed so that the amount of carbon injected. Up in the northern part is less than the amount of carbon injected in the southern part. And that's because the concentrations up north were much lower than the down below. So let's put the carbon where we need it. So we, we, you know, we focus the carbon down there, okay?
Sounds good.
Um, and so where are we on, uh, on, on, on recent work on, the timing on this is great, but. The, uh, meaning my, my, my animations are a little messed up. Uh, but where we are on, on the recent work on that groundwater containment system that you have out there. You probably, I'm sure you all know that it was vandalized this past summer. Those repairs have been made. Um, and by timing, poor timing maybe, uh, the lines for those, for those lines were fully clogged. They had not been cleaned in fifteen, twenty years since they were installed. They were fully clogged with iron precipitate. We have high iron concentrations in all groundwater in New England, for the most part, that's a, that's a general statement, absolutely, it's a general statement. Um, they need to be cleaned, so we took advantage of that time to, to unearth parts of that, that line, cause it, it was built without cleanouts. So we had to go in and install some cleanouts and open up some connections. And we hired a jet cleaning company to jet clean it. So that's nine hundred feet of jet cleaning, it's not a trivial exercise, okay? So that's been done. Uh, we're waiting for the final electrical connections for the, uh, the, the pump in the well and then we're gonna restart that system. Um, so, you know, we, we continue to work with that. But one thing I want to throw out there is that. Part of our efforts, you know, commitments to you and our, our, our mandate from you is to continue to look at that system. It doesn't make sense. And will it continue to make sense now that we've installed the P, the P R B? We may find that with the P R B, it's so suc- so successful, that operation of that wastewater, you know, that. Uh, I'm sorry, that groundwater containment system, the pump and treat system is no longer defective, cost-effective or needed. In which case, we're going to recommend to you and to the D E P that we terminate that. Save yourself, you know, six figures a year.
Four, four hundred. On the four hundred thousand magnitude.
Exactly, okay? If it's doing nothing, there's no point in continuing to operate it, okay?
Amen.
Um, so. Uh, what are we doing in, you know, next year? Uh, well, the big target next year, you know, you, you've, you've heard us for the last year is. Generated a lot of data, a lot of field work, a lot of data gap filling and things like that. Now we're looking at that data and trying to tease out as much as we can, what does it tell us? Okay, and, and this is the heavy part of, of the, of the project. Uh, so the first thing is to complete the phase two comprehensive site assessment. And we have issues there. We already talked about what is the disposal site boundary and that comes right into that whole discussion about. The wastewater treatment plant, the secondary source issue and all that. We have to sort through that. We talked about the ecological risk assessment, that's looking very favorable for us. Um, and then we, we talked about the human health risk assessment, that's part of the, the phase two. And that also is, I think is looking very favorable for us, and again, largely because you terminated the source or the exposure pathway through the drinking waters.
What's the timeframe on your phase two report?
It's hard to say, cause the big question is, what's the timeframe to get here back from the D E P on the disposal site boundary? Okay, but, and that's a difficult question, they're wrestling with it, cause it's a policy-type decision.
Exactly.
So I don't know exactly when it, you know, when that might be, okay? Uh, ongoing I R A work, we do have an ongoing I R A that, that's related to the pilot tests. Um, and the full-scale, uh, uh, P R B work. That work is, you know, the pilot test will be wrapped up officially, so we'll send a completion report on that. And then we'll have to do some performance monitoring for the full-scale P R B. That'll end up getting wrapped up ultimately into the, um. The, the permanent solution statement reporting is an M C P jargon thing, uh, eventually anyway.
And just as we're going into jargon, could you just say what the acronyms are here of I R A and?
Oh, Jen, 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 she can ta- talk about the, the.
Uh, uh, I R A is immediate response to action.
Oh, okay.
Um, so there was also an open up, still open I R A for the groundwater pump and treat system. Where we do regular monitoring for that. The pilot test will be wrapped up and then, as John said, the full-scale P R B. Will eventually get wrapped up into our likely temporary, um, solution for the site.
Good point. Jen, we have to congratulate Jen, she just passed her L S P exam, so she's now a Massachusetts licensed site professional. And, uh, so that's why I defer to her for those things.
I should know all the acronyms.
Use it, because you'll forget it.
Uh, it's a, it's a significant achievement, it's a difficult exam.
Congratulations.
Uh, so then we move into phase three, which is basically a remedial al- alternative evaluation, a feasibility study using federal language. Um, and that's looking at what is the appropriate res- remedial response action here? And I think the answer is gonna be the P R B monitoring that for now. And, and Jen said, we're probably not gonna ever get to be a permanent solution here, given it's a long-term type thing. It would be a temporary solution. And, and then, you know, continuing to evaluate new technologies that are being developed every year. There's new technologies, new products coming on board. Uh, so if something comes up that is a better fit for this. That's something you might wanna consider. But for right now, the P R B, I think is the right one.
Go ahead.
Now, I, I, um, we had a tour of what you were doing and I missed that. And I did put forward a question, I think it was either to you or Michael, and said, ask if, uh, the P R Bs would, could this be used around ponds? You know, the, the safety of ponds. And the human contribution of people living around ponds, and I live on the outer Cape, but, but we, you know, people love their ponds all over. Mashpee has their issues and now Easton just closed a pond for the first time last year. Is there, and a lot of that is what we're allowing to flow in there just from the homeowner. Putting these around ponds would, it would help. Capture like nitrogen and phosphorus going into the pond.
No, no, this carbon doesn't, doesn't deal with nitrogen and phosphorus.
It doesn't deal with that, huh? Okay.
It's not effective, no.
With the other, all right, now you did.
It's, it's good for, it's good for organic chemicals like petroleum, like PFAS. In fact, a secondary benefit of the P R B is it's also going to, uh, limit the migration of the residual petroleum compounds you have out there. Remember, you still, you burned, you mean, the county burned tens of thousands or more of fuel oil out there. As part of their fire training activities.
Right.
A lot of that got spilled and washed away into the soils and the like, and it's residual, there's still petroleum constituents in the soils out there. So this, and that's why Jen mentioned, we have an ongoing activity there where we monitor for that as well.
It makes me think of.
So this helps with that.
Makes me think of what's around each fire in the department. And we have smaller airports, one in Chatham, there's one in Provincetown, there's the little field ones.
Well, well, John O'Brien was the director of the Health and Environmental Department. We actually talked about setting aside money.
Right.
To, I thought he helped a broader investigation of PFAS risk around the Cape, identifying areas where we know.
Yeah.
This material was deposited or utilized in some way, other fire training areas. Most of them are either here. Or out at the old, old military base.
Yeah.
So I was told by a third part, you know, it wasn't directly the source, but they said that there was. Within the last. The one well that showed a lot was the, from the fire department, was the, was the washing the clothes.
I mentioned, we, absolutely.
In, in his area.
Yep, absolutely, that's common.
Yeah.
Jen's working on the, uh, the fire training facility in Stowe, and I think you.
Yeah, they also have, they wash tons of gear there and it goes into their septic system, which then ends up being another source of PFAS at the same.
All right, we do have to restart wrapping up here.
Yeah, so, so the message, you know, the last thing is remedial im- implementation, which is basically what you're doing right now, it's just a, a, a report to say that. So that's our focus this year will be largely wrapping up the disposal site boundary and the reporting.
This is also great information for many other groups and people and so it's very exciting. And you're doing a great job and we're happy to have you back again.
Thank you.
And, uh, one, one day.
Sorry to take up so much of your time.
No, no, it's, we.
No, this is important.
There's a lot of stuff to talk about, and as I said earlier, it's complicated.
The other thing is that I, I look at this project as sort of a, as an opportunity. To, to better understand ways to deal with PFAS that can be useful for the other communities here.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think to some degree, when we get done with this, when we get to a point where we're, we're ready to wrap up and make an assessment as to whether or not the overall project was successful. I think, you know, we want, we wanna be able to somehow pull this together so that we can educate others on what we. This investigated, what we discovered, how the treatments work and, um, what the opportunities or lessons are for other communities.
Yeah, I'd just, just like to say, first of all, that it was a wise decision to bring you guys aboard because we're getting more information. And more transparency now than we did for years. Thank you. We, given us, even though, you know, we don't do the day-to-day, uh, oversight of this, we, gives us confidence if someone is, you know, that you're out there and you're.
It's not just us, I can tell you, we have a big team on this thing, that's what it takes for a project of this size.
And the other thing is, is that I think we have to understand that we are not alone in this. It just is more and more spreading across the country, you know, and. What we're doing, especially what they're doing at the base, which is where a lot of it, the, the engineering started. It is gonna be used as a template across the country to clean up other sites. So we're, we're helping ourselves and we're ensuring public health. But we're also, uh, you know, basically forging a path for other organizations in other places because. I think we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg as far as nationally, as cleaning up this, this.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
Oh, sir, you have a question?
Oh, there's a question here, I'm sorry. Uh, T C, could you, uh?
That's Tom.
Tom Cambrary.
Oh, Tom.
I think, I would guess.
Tom, uh, we're, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, I've been following, uh, the meeting discussion today and, uh, working with the G Z A. The community members in Hyannis and, uh, D E P and such. Anyway, I just wanna say very quickly, we're, um, very pleased with the work that G Z A has done. This, this, you hired a, a group of people with the right capability, strength and experience. And, uh, so, um, I'm, uh. Happy for the, the situation and forward to, moving forward on this critical PFAS issue that has impacted. The citizens of Hyannis and, uh, trying to get to the, the bottom of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, Tom and I were, uh, sort of together in our concern for this whole thing way back when. And, uh, having your stamp of approval, Tom, we're happy to hear it, so.
Same for us. We really appreciate his input, it's very helpful.
Yeah.
He has more history here than we have.
He does indeed, yeah. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thank. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good work. Proposed ordinance twenty six to be named supplemental budget request. The registry of deeds.
So.
Renovation.
I can give you a very quick introduction, then I'll turn it over to Paul for a very lengthy slideshow presentation. So I think, as you know, the the county has appropriated money through the exterior renovation of this building. Over the course of planning for that, we really, we figured out that we're going to have to move out of this building in order to 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 accommodate the workspaces and accommodate the disruption that that will happen. So we've been looking at alternative places. In the meantime, we've, I've been having discussions with the sheriff concerning the innovation building. Our I T department is in the in the upper level of the innovation building. They're going to have to move out by March, and so we have some space constraints with that too. So this appropriation is designed to accommodate us both with this building and with I T's impending move. So I'll turn it over to Paul for for more.
Not too many questions, everyone.
There may be some items here that we just have to.
I know we will, but. Thank you, Ken. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you. So quickly, here's Michael gave an introduction, just some additional context to the ordinance. So again, we've been displaced or potentially be displaced by the Superior Courthouse renovation. It'll include county administration and finance staff, H R. As Michael mentioned, our I T department is going to need space as well. So we look at this project as a space for temporary swing space for that project and also long term space in the future. So in conjunction with our master plan, you know, we have our hopes and dreams down the road of what we could do, but in the short term, you know, transition piece, we still have office staff needs. So we met with, you know, registry of deeds, Dave Murphy, Jack Mead, to go over the space, how it was being used, what we could do to optimize it and, you know, locate staff down there for both short and long term. So the work includes a three thousand square foot renovation that would be led by the facilities department. It would consist of essentially gutting the area, you know, and just new paint, fresh carpet, some stick build offices, eight, seven foot by nine foot workstations, a ten foot by fourteen foot conference room with audio visual, and then some minor electrical and H P C, H P C work accordingly. Our estimated project cost is a hundred seventy thousand dollars based on some past, you know, you know, projects we've done of similar, similar magnitude or similar scope. So what what this includes a draft ordinance request. And just before we go on, this is a plan view of the deeds basement. Not sure if if, you know, everyone has been down there or not, but the 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 main entrance. You walk into the deeds basement now and you you take a right and there's all the deeds files that are down there. That that needs to remain in place, at least for the short term, until we can come up with a long term controlled, you know, controlled climate storage system. Where once that solution, you know, ideally, we're originally, we're looking at the old jail jail basement, but potentially with the master plan, that might not be the best location long term if we're going to say demo the building. So there's a pause in this area. The rest of the space we looked at as far as how can we optimize it? There's really just an open bullpen there right now. Not really. I don't think it's ever really been thought through for for, you know, an application of county staff. You know, as far as say the finance and finance and I T group being down there. So we show the the eight workstations being located. We show the two offices. We show an area for copying. You know, printing in a conference room with a kitchen break room. So essentially optimizing the space, come up with valuable swing space and a place for our staff to be at. So that essentially, you know, covers it all. We said this would be a short one.
But the courts. What are they doing? Are they doing?
With the Superior, with with the Superior Courthouse renovation? Yep. So we're, I would say getting in the final stages of planning with them right now. They brought in their own project manager. We just had a meeting yesterday. We're we're looking at utilizing potentially the harbor view room, some onsite, you know, mobile trailer space, and then really optimizing existing buildings where the First District Courthouse potentially Plymouth. But there's so many requirements, regulations, how they lay things out.
Right.
We just really need to make sure we can accommodate every need, but we're we're getting there in the end where.
I think it sounds like a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we could. We could go on for a while on that project, but we're we're in good shape there.
Okay.
Planning on there.
All right. Billson, say no more about that. Is that it? So this is, okay, that's great. So do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to introduce the ordinance twenty six dash to be named supplemental budget request, registry of deeds basement renovation project to the Assembly of Delegates.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Go do that.
Keep going.
Just going to move on to the revised discussion about. So Michael contacted me and said, do we still want to do this since things have kind of changed, but not necessarily doing that? It's not, that's still sort of in question about whether it's going to be in place or not as of January. So we revised our.
What was the change?
Well, the change actually was just a line or how did we, we did make a very minor change.
Can anybody describe where the change?
Yeah, but sorry.
No, we added, we put in whereas, whereas to vulnerable populations, whereas the vulnerable is critical, whereas there's twenty two thousand SNAP beneficiaries. I think that's what we added. And that was a suggestion.
That where is that line?
Yes, whereas that was it, really. And it looks nice and clean.
In the interest of moving this along, Madam Chair, I I I move to approve and execute the revised resolution adopted by the Assembly of Delegates in support of the SNAP supplemental nutrition program for Barnesville County.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I know Ron would too. Okay. All right, we're going to, all right, now there is schedule. We're going to have that.
I would recommend in the interest of time that you know, we have a schedule, a meeting schedule is sort of proposed for next year. And you all have it. You all have a chance to look at it. I don't, I think if there's no objection, I think it would make sense to work with Michael and staff to at least do some reconnaissance to see about whether the difficulties and challenges in implementing it. So I think we should just move forward with it.
I agree.
All right.
We might not have a hundred percent success, but we'll have some. And I think it's good to let people know we're coming to your town soon.
Well, I think with the with the ballot question that we have coming up and with all the things that we're doing, quite frankly, that have a positive impact on our towns, I think it's, it would be incredibly smart for us to take our program on the road. My only question is whether or not with all of the work being done in the courthouse, that at some point we may want to do all our meetings on the road. I think that that would be the question is, is I would almost want to take this a little bit further. And that is, should we just move everything? We we may want to have a remote locate, another location for our meetings on the first of the month. That could be perhaps at one of the town halls. They may be open to us coming in and doing our regular business meeting in one place in the beginning of the month and take the the other meeting on the road. So I just think that's something, if it's okay with the board, I just assume. Again, I'm doing this assuming that, you know, in the succession of being chair, that it would be my responsibility in setting the agenda and setting things up to at least help investigate. I have no problem working with staff to at least start investigating these sites to see if they may, any of them make any sense.
Right. Okay. Enough said. Yep.
Good. Okay.
We're going on to the twenty twenty seven operating budget statement and budget, capital budget statement.
So I'll go, I'll go through this relatively quickly. The I'll start with the the operating budget and only tell you that we decided since we issue and and develop and 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 forward to the commissioners and then the assembly a a capital budget every year, which reflects our capital plan. I decided to make sense to do a capital, you know, for the commissioners to adopt a capital statement as well as as your normal adoption of of a budget statement, nor the general fund budget statement. So essentially, sort of a follow up to last year, trying to keep things relatively consistent, knowing that we're going into a different, relatively difficult budget budget year for a number of reasons, but we're looking to adhere and continue to adhere to a structurally balanced budget. We know that we we are going to have to go through a reduction in staffing levels that I propose to do through attrition over a planned five year period. We have, we know we have issues with health insurance. There is the potential. Not quite sure what the odds are yet, but there's the potential for a twenty five percent increase in our health insurance costs, and that's going to be reflected in.
How much of an increase?
Twenty five percent.
Can you believe that?
Yeah, and that's in your towns too. So that's, there's a lot of work going on right now to define, you know, what's, what should be included in plans. This is all coming from weight loss.
What is going up twenty five?
Health insurance.
Oh, yes. Twenty five percent is absolutely.
Yeah. So so we'll see, you know, what, how those numbers come out. It's too early to to say anything.
Those great cans being happy. Anyway.
So we know that we've got some realignment of departments to better, to better serve the county and to serve the programs that we offer to the towns and the public. I would like to look at consolidating some of our technology purchases. Right now it's very decentralized. Every department budgets and and budgets for technology. And I think that there are much more efficient things we can do there. I mentioned that we do need, you know, with the with the board's help, we're going to have to clearly define the definition of structurally balanced budget, you know, in towns, it's very easy. You've relatively easy. You've got a very defined real estate property tax revenue number. You've got very, most of the time you eventually have a very well defined state aid number. And then so you're just sort of toying with what your local receipts are going to be. On the county level, we, all of our, most of our budget revenues are are very flexible. You know, if we have a down real estate year, seventy five percent of our of our revenues could could, you know, substantially drop or could substantially increase as we've seen over the last five years or so. So so we really need to wrap our hands around what what, how to define that and then translate that to policy. And I know Carol and her team have been working on that pretty hard. We need to plan for an elected charter commission. You know, as you know, the commissioners had voted to get that on the November twenty sixth ballot. And so we will plan financially plan for that and make sure that we're doing everything that we can do to make sure that, you know, the county government is run as efficiently as possible. We, capital needs, we, Paul just was here talking a little bit about some of the capital issues that have to do with the courts. Our relationship with the state court system has been very good. I I think probably one of the better relationships we have, you know, that the county has with the states, state court system among the existing counties. I do know that we are, we are tied to a lease, as are all the counties. We're tied to a lease that is is getting to be quite antiquated and very difficult for for counties to actually make any changes. So I think I think there's a need to develop a a staff and political conversation about fixing some of those discrepancies. And just again, in terms of deferred capital issues, we know that we rent space at market rate to house our departments at the same time that we are leasing our own space to the court system for well below market value. And that's, that's that's not sustainable. We've, we've spent a fair amount of money with the Clean Water Center, and we want to make sure that that is as successful as can possibly be. We also want to make sure that we are looking for additional aquafund monies to to sustain aquafunds so that the the spike in people needing loan funding to, in order to cover the tie in costs or the upgrade to their Title V system, that those loan monies, that capital principal amount is there for us to lend. We want to make sure of that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is a twelve page document. And and I feel, and and Michael has put a tremendous amount of time and energy and effort in it. It looks like an outstanding document. And rather than have him recite all eleven, twelve pages in the interest of time, I'm very happy to move that we approve both. And that maybe we take up at a future meeting, any areas that we'd like to discuss or clarify going forward, but we need to begin this process and we need to begin it right away.
I agree.
And I just want to commend our administrator for doing an outstanding job in in preparing this. This is perhaps the most thorough and comprehensive budget statement, both for capital and operations that we've ever seen. And I I'm thrilled with it. So.
That's great. Okay. So do we have a motion?
I have a motion that we approve the proposed. Let me just pull it up here. I had it a second ago. I move to approve the 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 budgets, the budget statements that have been presented by the county administrator, the for fiscal year twenty twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michael, you really do do great work and thank you. And hopefully we reflected that in our review.
Very true.
Okay, so any new business from anyone? Nope. Okay. Commissioner's agenda, the first item I am going to.
So I'm going to move to authorize the consent agenda items eight A as listed on the November ninth twenty twenty five agenda.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Going on to the rest.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the commissioner's consent agenda items eight B through eight I and listed on the November nineteenth twenty twenty five agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner's reports. Yes.
Yes, first of all, I apologize having ducked out and water and it turns out we got into a little informal discussion out there, but this month is Thanksgiving and we're all going to sit and celebrate the arrival of the pilgrims and their first repast. But we have to remember that when they got here, there were already people here.
Yes.
And some of those pilgrims, there was quite a death toll over the first winter, but those who survived did so.
We do want to just say that, you know, many times in groups and meetings now you'll hear, you want to recognize that we are on the land of ancient, you know, peoples and and we want to respect this and yet we don't. And I think that, you know, words matter when there's action and real intent behind them. So if we are going to say those words, think about what you're saying and actually try to live by it and protect the land that is so sacred. And and respect those values of those of those ancient and current people. Last night I attended something that was totally non governmental. It was a sort of Thanksgiving celebration. It was called the American Revival. And it's something that's being put on by Nicholas Ma, who is son of Yo Yo Ma. And this was a free concert. Had a sign up, was at the what theater, and unbeknownst to me, they had a Thanksgiving celebration. So it did involve the Wampanoag tribes. But Yo Yo Ma was there and performed. This was all free. It was an amazing thing. Unfortunately, I had to leave it. I had a slumming voice meeting, which I should have called in sick on because I could have, I could have. However, it was a wonderful thing and I hope that I would like to think they taped it. But just the words of it from his son was really about bringing people together and celebrating our differences and our commonality. It was really a lovely thing. And I could think of other things that are more government related, but I think that that sort of is government related. Mark, anything?
I'll pass.
Okay, upcoming business. Okay, upcoming business, we see we're going to be having, um. I hope Mass Hire can come. I am your liaison. I have been terrible at it. I will admit that upfront. Uh, I hardly make some of these meetings, but when I do, I'm totally impressed. We are lucky to have them. They are out there changing, training and helping people, uh, with. Uh, job training and getting the jobs behind it. So I hope they do come. We'll have our capital budget presentation and we can go over some of our goals even then. Anything else? We're all set here. Anything else you want to add to this, Michael? No?
Uh, nope, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, administrative reports.
Uh, very quickly, uh, just let you know that the dredge subcommittee, uh, looking at the permitting optimization study, um, met, uh, yesterday. And, uh, I, it was a good meeting. Um, they're, they're going to be prepared to make recommendations, the full dredge advisory committee. And as soon as that happens, uh, I'll be in front of you, uh, proposing a, a plan to adopt some, um, some, uh, changes to the dredge program.
Great. Alright, there's only one thing left.
Move to a turn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you everyone, uh, for attending and thank you for all the work you do.